Councilmember, would you give us our prayer?
Let us look to the Lord. Gracious God, our Father, Lord, we come this evening with bowed down heads and humble hearts just to tell you thank you, Lord. We thank you because we know that you are still in control. We thank you that things are as well as they are, Lord. We thank you for our mayor, Lord. We ask you to continue to give him a vision for West Memphis. Cover him, keep him, order his steps in your word, Lord. We thank you. Thank you, Lord, for our first responders, our police, our fire, every employee of this city, Lord. Touch now in Jesus' name. Keep us safe, Lord. And we just thank you right now. Now, Lord, our nation, this nation, we need you, Lord. This city, West Memphis, Lord, we need you right now. We need your power to be manifest throughout this city, Lord. Heal us right now. Touch our young people, Lord. Give them a mind to negotiate, Lord, to talk to one another. Lord, this silliness really has to stop. And we know you are in control. We know you can, and we believe that you will, Lord. So we're gonna say thank you in advance. And then, Lord, thank you for this opportunity to come and serve your people. Let your spirit permeate this building, Lord. Every heart, every mind, Lord, that we make the best decision for West Memphis. And we know you can, we believe you will, Lord. And we look now to tell you thank you for your son, Jesus Christ. And in his matterless name, we pray and ask it all. Amen. Thank God.
Let's face the flag, please.
Let's just do the fact. Amen and say it to America. And to the Republic which stands one nation on our God and the visible, whatever being justice for all.
Thank you.
I'll call this meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor McClintock.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Souter.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce.
Here.
Councilmember Cat. Councilmember Cat. Councilmember Crum.
Present, here.
Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Hudson. Councilmember Hudson. Councilmember Muhammad.
Present.
Councilmember Monday.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Here.
Councilmember Wheeler.
Here.
Seven out of ten present.
Well, seven out of ten present. We have a quorum. We had no bid openings. We moved down to minutes. Were there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, can I get a motion to second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Those minutes are approved. We had no old business. We have no new business. We're gonna move down to permission request. Permission for the council to appropriate 21,000 for the CARES Act, from the CARES Act months ago, into the Public Works Fund for the Mayor's Operation Cleanup Clearout Program. We talked about it in the pre-council, pretty much just giving an update. And what that is, is funds that we got from the government that we can use. That we have a lot of abandoned lots that need to be cut around the city. And we want to make sure that we take care of those lots. You know, you have many individuals, families who are paying for homes, and they shouldn't have to look outside and see a overgrown lot in their community. Even though it's not our responsibility, I still feel that we have some sort of responsibility to try to get it taken care of. So I'm asking you all to approve that $21,000 to go into that fund so we can get these lots taken care of. Also, I want to add, in your package, I gave you all the 160 lots. And almost not everyone, but I pretty much called everyone to get their package early so they can ride around their ward and look at those lots. And if there was any lots that accidentally we may left off, to let us know. So we're seeing that. Can I get a motion to second?
So moved.
Second, sir.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I just hope we, this council will think about this even for next year. Because, as you stated, we can't cut all these lots. And so I know before I got on the council, it was voted that we would be cutting lots. But I think we need to continue bidding these lots out because the city has enough lots of its own.
I agree.
And so we can't maintain ours and others. So hopefully, we'll look at this again for next summer and, you know, just kind of continue bidding this out.
I agree 100% with you, Dr. Bruce. Also, I want to add, some of the things not only that we are doing with just kind of lots, have you all been seeing? I just paid attention to all the homes that we have torn down. If you ride down on Jackson and 11th Street, that home is finally gone. All the thousands of tires that we continue to pick up, and it seem like they end up back on the ground. How that happened, I don't know. But, you know, we just doing a lot. But I do agree with Dr. Bruce, and I appreciate that. Definitely, we need to keep this going. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Also, I'm gonna ask for a motion to second to add the $6,500 request to the agenda.
Explain that again, Mayor, why you want that $6,500?
Thank you, Ms. Muhammad. In our community, we just suffered a two-year-old that lost their lives. That, you know, I'm very upset about that. And I think it was a cowardly move for anyone to shoot in anyone's house and then take the life of an innocent baby. And even in that same area, we have had several other shootings in that area. It's very upsetting for me. And then, just the night before last, a young man was just shot on East Barn, shot in the head and killed. On West Avalon, another young man was shot in the back. And anyways, it pisses me off, you know? I'm a mayor that I care about things. And I just don't like what's going on in our community. And I understand that we can do everything that we can, but it's some things that we just can't do. We have to keep praying for our city, keep working with our police department, talking to our young men, talking with our churches, asking parents to step up, hell, and be parents, to control their own kids. And it's just a step to make sure that we able to cover our communities and get that protection that we need. I've heard from several people, especially in that holiday north 18 area, that had been asking if we can do something. And we have found money that's budgeted, that we can get them in the police fund, but we were short one more camera. So I'm asking for another 6,500 out of this free money that we have, that you all would grant me this request.
That's only for one cameras, right?
Well, we're gonna get four, but we got enough money to get three, but we need that four.
I move that we give you permission to use some money.
I second it.
Any further discussion?
Mayor, I've got a couple of things I'd like to say.
Let me add the motion to add to the agenda.
Oh, okay. I thought it was in this.
Will you make the motion, Ms. Muhammad, to add?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we add the $6,500 for Skycams per Mayor McClintock's request.
I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Opposed? Then, Ms. Muhammad, you can make your motion.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we give Mayor McClintock permission to get that $6,500 for the Skycams.
Councilman Monday, second. Then, Councilman Crum?
Yes, sir. A couple of questions. Crime in West Memphis seems to be rampant everywhere. Some of it's more serious than others. But I guess my question would be, is this gonna be a continual program where we might be able to put cameras up in other neighborhoods, just like we're doing over in this neighborhood?
Well, I mean, I would love it, you know? Because when it comes down to spending money, you know, this council allocated, I put them wherever they may need to be.
The reason I ask was because in the previous times, we've had people had to purchase their own cameras to put up, so.
Well, those was private companies in stores, like apartment complexes and stores and different things like that. South and needed for the schools, so.
I mean, you got citizens in all the neighborhoods now that are starting to step up and say, hey, we gotta stop this. And I know you probably saw the flyers that they're gonna put out over in Ward 3, and I think Ward 1, and maybe Ward 2, and just kind of get it through the city. But there has to be, like Mr. Murray said in his prayer, we got to do something to contain this stuff.
Well, I'll tell you this. I mean, since I've been on mayor and been councilperson, I think you all have heard my sentiments, and I've been speaking out about this for so long. And we know mostly what these areas are happening at. And we just gotta do what's necessary. And like I said, at the end of the day, we can't feel down because it's nothing we possibly could have done to stop it. With all the police in the world, all the sky cops, we probably wouldn't have been able to stop it. But we just need to do all that we can do to try to move it forward and keep it safe. Also, on 14th Street, down from Mr. Monday's house, one house got 60 bullets.
I was gonna speak about that.
60 bullets. You know, it's crazy.
My last question.
Go ahead.
And I guess this may be to Assistant Chief Bradley.
He's not here.
Who is, what? He's not here?
He ain't in the building.
Well, I was gonna ask, who monitors these cameras? I mean, do we have somebody that monitors?
Well, actually, they're not being monitored. Mr. Crum, I want to answer this question so bad, but I don't want you to put me on jumpstart with that question. You know how this is.
Well, I mean, at one time, I thought we had the cameras where the police could pull up underneath the camera and then download stuff.
And we do have the detectives that could do that.
As long as they're getting monitored, I guess.
I mean, they're getting monitored. Correction, I'm sorry, we're North Avalon. If we're North Avalon, well, it should have a not South Avalon. Yeah, go ahead, Council.
Yeah, like the shooting that happened on South, the shooting that happened on South 14th Street, that particular house has been shot up about four times. I haven't even talked to the owner of the home, the surrounding property. And they got the people out there, out of there before. And they got some more young people in it now. It just got shut up the other day, where I think a young man that was driving a truck got shot. But the bullets sprayed, so it hit the neighbors' houses in the area. Old, single women, seniors, bullets sprayed their house across the street from where the shooting occurred. Lady lived there with two minor children in the house. And this is, my car been shot up, my house been shot up on the same street. The same people are involved in it, you know? And our police have came out, they did what all they could do. But the people, the homeowners, the people that live there, their grandchildren and children doing this, and stuff is being done. And I mean, I don't want to see nobody killed. I don't want to see another child die. You know, it's, we gotta do something, we gotta stand up.
I'm gonna say this, and I'm not gonna prolong this thing, but we can go ahead and move on. But police doing what they can do, this council and this administration doing what it's doing. Hell, black folks gotta step up and start talking. I'm sick of it, you know, dealing with this issue here with this child, and they talking about they ain't saying nothing, or he ain't gonna tell who shot him in the back. It's time out for that mess. If the community wants it stopped, the community gonna have to be the one to step the hell up to make it stop. All in favor, aye? Opposed? Thank you all so much. Can I get a motion to second to add the revised plan draft of the CDBG to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll ask Paul, will you come up and kind of give the distribution? Who?
Who seconded?
Thank you, Mayor. So do you want me to go through the explanation? Okay. So this is funding that West Memphis received to address the pandemic. We received the money about two years ago. It had to, it came from HUD through the CDBG program. It had a lot of strings to it, and you had to, you had to spend the money to address the pandemic. We did spend some of the money for the vast majority of our needs. We were able to find funding from other sources that came through other programs that were pandemic-related. But one of the eligible activities for this money is broadband services. And the utility department is working on a broadband project where they're gonna get into providing broadband access and capabilities to the city of West Memphis. And this money would be used to help provide those services in the low-income areas. It is a project that HUD is very much in favor of when I told them what our proposal was. And we had public hearing, there were no objections to it.
Paul, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
All right. One of them was the one I came back and asked you. Why is this talking about fiscal year 2019?
2019. That was confusing even when they gave it to us, because we were already in fiscal year 2020. But that's how they awarded it to us. They wanted it put back into 2019. So that was a HUD requirement.
And the total of the grant was 330,000?
Well, now, we got, if you look at the back page of this final statement, and so the first line is our original block grant amount for that year, which was 299,368. Then, the first round of CDBG CV funding, we received 186,531. Now, if you look at the next line, it says round three. And you're like, well, what happened to round two? We don't know. That's just how they termed it when they gave it to us. So round three, we got 190,000. So if you add the 186 and the 190 together, it's 376,377,000. So we're proposing to allocate 330,000, which is what we have primarily remaining in account, to the broadband activity. And that will take care of that funding once we do that.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Were there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, can I get all in favor, aye? Opposed? Yeah, we got more. Did you get it?
I did most of it. Put on, well, I did one most.
Okay. Well, Dr. Bruce and Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
All right. All in favor, aye? Opposed? It passes. We're gonna move down to committee reports. We're gonna start with police and utility?
Utility, we met, but I have not received those minutes. So I'll report that out next meeting. Police, we did meet, we did not have a quorum, so we just had a little discussion. We talked about the police department assisting our code enforcement for basketball goals in the street, obstructing traffic, and parked cars, parked vehicles, broken down, abandoned, what have. They've been sitting there for months, so they agreed to help us out with that. And I'm happy to report that four of the seven vacancies we had have been filled. And they are processing, they have more applications that they are processing even now. So things are looking better for our police department. Keep them in your prayer. Thank you.
Mr. Murray?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so based on you and I, you and I, our discussion?
Yes, sir.
So the meeting is what day?
The first Monday of each month.
Okay. And all the, Mayor and I discussed, basically, he'll be letting us know probably the fourth, fourth, I guess, the fourth week, so we'll know that come the first Monday.
Right.
Everybody will be present.
Right.
I've been out, as I stated, but I'll be making the meetings now.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes, sir.
Was there any discussion during the police commission meeting regarding the fireworks and fireworks ordinance?
No, it hadn't, it didn't come up in the meeting.
Because it kind of goes back to what we've been talking about, because they fired guns up in the air and, you know?
Well, you know, we talked about that last year, but we never revisited that ordinance.
My phone's ringing off.
Yeah.
For the last eight months or so.
I think they're saying it's like 31 days now, and they would like to shorten it.
It's 21 days.
It's 21 days.
It's a 21?
Yeah, it's June the 20th through July the 11th.
They want to shorten it.
That is a little excessive, especially when you consider a lot of these fireworks sound like bombs.
Right.
And you think about the elderly, you think about when I had my dog, Pierre, it was so difficult to contain him when those fireworks were going out, because his little ears were just hurting so bad.
So we need to revisit that ordinance.
We had conversation with Chief Campbell and Assistant Chief Bradley and Captain Presley about making sure that the patrol that during this period of time, especially at evening and night, are aware of that ordinance for the fireworks.
Okay, and I did talk to Chief Campbell, and he has agreed that he will meet with us each month. He wasn't aware of the date, so he'll be at our meeting, and we'll be able to ask some of these issues with him.
Okay.
Any conclusion report?
Any conclusion report?
We'll go to budget.
We'll have the report next meeting, because we just had the meeting today at noon.
Okay, Public Works, Ms. Muhammad?
Yes, her Public Works met Tuesday, June 7th. A few highlights from that meeting is Mr. Boner spoke on getting the code enforcement officer's position a raise. The committee moved on that recommendation, and we refer it to the Budget Committee, which we did, and also to Mayor McClintock. And I think in budget meeting today, Councilman Crum discussed the fact of getting with the Arkansas Municipal League and getting a list of all of the
First-class cities.
First-class cities that have code enforcement officers and see what their code enforcement officers are paying. And also, City Clerk Williams said not only get that list, but find out exactly what their job description is to compare to the code enforcement officer's position here in the city of West Memphis. So we're gonna be doing that, and we'll be getting back with you, Mayor McClintock. Also, the fleet report is the front-end loader, there are two operational at the time of this meeting, and one was down. Rear end loaders, four operational, operational, none down. The one-armed bandits, there were two operational, zero down. The gravel trucks, four operational, and one down. Public Works Director's report was this. Recycling totaled 12,966.48 tons. There were 1,000 tires dumped, which is still an ongoing issue at the city shop. The city engineers report, all projects are moving as expected. Code enforcement officer, Mr. Phillips, is doing a wonderful job enforcing codes and ordinances. And I don't have that report from our, I don't have his report, so please forgive me, I'll get that to you at a later date, of his collections and things that he has done. That ends my report. You want me to go on to the Fire Commission?
Yes, ma'am.
Fire Commission met June 21st, which was this past, what was that, Wednesday? Tuesday? The Fire Department is currently interviewing for two positions. One person resigned, and then we already had an opening. Building maintenance. The roof at Station 1 was repaired on June 22nd by Delta Roofing. Ground constructions at the new training facility is complete. We're just waiting for cure time before moving containers onto the site. The Fire Department is hosting an IFSTAC class instructor one at Station 3. Year-to-date, there has been 1,142 EMS calls. EMS collection year-to-date is 113,823.87. The projected grand opening ceremony for Station 5 is scheduled for Monday, July 11th. The first 10 floors of the casino high-rise was approved on June 15th for occupancy. Also discussed was the 4896 plan. I do have handouts that the Fire Chief gave us. So you all can look at this plan. You want to pass them down for me? Some people may already have them over here at the meeting. And I'm going to call Chief Clay or Chief Ely, either one of you, to kind of explain that 4896 plan. They're now on the Kelly Day plan, and the chief can explain a whole lot better what this is all about.
Good afternoon, everyone. What we're working now at the Fire Department is called a Kelly Day schedule. And for the ones that are not familiar with it, I'll give you a little overview of kind of how it works. You work a shift, office shift, work a shift, office shift, work a shift, then you're off four days in a row, which adds up to actually working 10 days a month. The Fire Department is advancing all across the state of Arkansas. And it's starting to really evolve. And Chief Clay and I, we sat down, and when I was appointed to position, we began to look at different ways that we could curve overtime, cut down on sick leave abuse. And collectively, these are some of the ideas we came up with. So we began to do our research last year, and we talked to some Fire Chiefs all over the state of Arkansas that had already started this 4896 schedule. And I've done, I guess, I've got a brochure I want you to look at, and it kind of gives you an idea of kind of what I'm talking about, that this is the stuff that we just came up with. It's already in effect all over the state of Arkansas. And they've got a lot of good reviews out there. I'll give you a chance to kind of see. The Fire Department's script, how we're doing. And so we looked into it, and we decided we would just kind of wait, give ourselves all last year to really get our research together. And we've done a lot of research on the 4896 schedule. As you can see on your flyers there, out of 26 fire departments in the state of Arkansas, we are the only fire department still using the Kelly Day schedule. Some of the benefits to go into this, and some of the Fire Chiefs that I talked to was telling me how it helped with their recruiting, number one, their retention. And the way it helps with recruiting is by them only having to come to work five times a month and working two shifts to be in our four, then they're able to come and attract firefighters and paramedics from further out. Right now, we know firefighters and especially paramedics are at a premium, they're really hard to attract right now because there is such demand. And they found that going to the 48, they can maybe stay maybe in Forest City, drive here, be here two days, cut down on all the fuel they were burning commuting back and forth. It also reduced sick leave abuse. Now, with us working the shift, go home, work a shift, go home, with this here, you work 24, you work 48, which is two days, where you work the first day, and then you work another day. Well, if you're already at work, say somebody went out last night, they had too many beers, then they call in sick because they got a hangover. Well, we won't have that problem now because they was at work last night. And when they're off, every time they're off, they're off for 96 hours, which is the four-day shift. 50% reduction in trips, time spent commuting to and from work each month. And they also receive 10 additional weekends off a year. So thus, that was a kind of driving force to why we want to really look at it. And as we looked at it, to start getting our results in, and the data start coming in on how much better, much more productive, the much productivity they had on work, and the time they spent with their family using this schedule. So that's why we're leaning toward implementing that schedule. I just want to give you guys an idea to look at what was already going on in the state of Arkansas, so it's not something that we came up with. As you can see right now, we're the only fire department out of the 26 that's still using the Kelly Day. So that was my facts on it. Anybody got any questions? facts on it. Anybody got any questions?
So Chief, let me ask you, are you, um, you hadn't started this program yet, right?
No, we haven't.
Okay. Are you wanting the council to, um, approve this program? I'm just asking.
No, actually, I was just kind of sharing with you all, uh, what the administration at the fire department is looking closely at doing and just kind of informing you guys on what we was thinking about doing here, uh, the first of the year. That's what I was counting. I didn't want you guys being in the dark, kind of being in the loop of what we're doing at the fire.
We don't need to do, make a motion or anything right now.
No.
No, I was.
I think it's administrative, uh, decision.
I think, just give us enough time to read through these things because we just got them today.
Right. No, it doesn't. Uh, again, that's a good question. Financially, it's the same. Instead of coming to work 10 days a month, you come to work five days a month, you just stay there for two days. Anyway, you do the math, it's still, it's still 10 days, so there's no financial gain. Uh, everything remains the same from a financial standpoint. You just give the guys more time off. It gives them, uh, 10 additional weekends off a year. Uh, again, this has already been tested, you know, they've proven all of the state of Arkansas did it works. We're just trying to bring the fire department up to the 21st century. Uh, that's our plan.
Yes, sir. Uh, when do you plan to implement this?
Uh, the first of the year.
First of the year.
Yes, sir. Any more questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That concludes your report, Ms. Mohammed.
Right. Uh, the parks commission did not meet due to the, um, director being out under doctor's care.
Okay. Uh, AMP, councilman, did you want to go with AMP or?
I give, uh, uh, everybody a copy of the AMP report for, uh, May the 28th. But on next, uh, council meeting, we'll have a report from, uh, from June the 22nd meeting.
Okay. All right. Uh, that was police, utility, AMP, budget, public works, fire, uh, then neglecting the one else. I do have a couple of, a couple of announcements dealing with the reports. Um, Lear Street Bridge and the 10 Mile Bio is going out for bid. Uh, the state is sending it out for bid to get ready to get some bids and to start to repair those areas. As well as next week, our overlay program will be ran in the paper for a week. And then the overlay will start somewhere around the first of August, overlaying the streets.
Mayor, can we back up just a little bit? Could I get Jim to come up and talk about the, uh, tomorrow night?
I, I hear them. I got them coming. Yeah.
Mayor, which, which street did you say was gonna be overlaid?
Well, the, the streets that you all chosen. You ain't forgot.
Okay, all right. No, that's fine. I didn't know. I thought you were talking about 7th Street there for a minute. But that's a street, that's a state project.
Thank you, Councilman Crowe. I had no presentations, uh, announcements. I did have, first of all, I want to say, uh, is just so thankful to have such a world-class group of industries here in the city of West Memphis. So you know that we had Family Dollar that's closing next month. Most of their, majority of their employees will be displaced next month. And we got people that just need jobs, or someone that just possibly want to, uh, start something new. We had two great job fairs today. Uh, FedEx had a job fair today early at our library. And they hire over 50 individuals down there. And from 3:00 to 5:00 this evening, we had another job fair where we had great company like Mada, uh, Bosch, uh, uh, Arkansas Workforce, uh, West Memphis Tire, uh, Fire Police, uh, Public Works Departments, and many other, uh, many other industries and businesses here. And they got a lot of quality employers that they are looking to hire. And I just want to thank them all for doing that. And some of them are even renting out the, uh, library to have some additional job fair. So it's good to be in a situation that you get more jobs than people are getting, but when people are hurting the need to jobs, it's good to be able to have them. And these are good paying jobs. I mean, jobs paying $18. I know FedEx was paying $22. Mada was paying, what, $20 for that $3,000 signing bonus? So it was a lot of different people that was there and they were paying pretty good money. So it was no small change that, you know, people walking in expecting. So I'm just grateful for that. Um, now, Jim Jackson, will you come forward a minute and give us the information on, uh, Freedom Fest?
I have a special spot saved out there for everyone of you tomorrow night at Freedom Fest. Just let me know. We got big fans. We got lots of big fans, so. But, uh, Freedom Fest is tomorrow night. Uh, we're gonna have, uh, a lot of vendors out there, a lot of food vendors, uh, regular vendors. Uh, I do have to thank all of the departments. Uh, this is a citywide event. Working with the fire department, utility, uh, street, uh, all the departments, uh, utility, uh, they all, uh, uh, helped with Freedom Fest. Got, uh, two good bands, uh, starting at, musical start at 6:00. Actually, I've got two bands who, uh, uh, originally hired and they did play at our first Blues Off Broadway. Uh, but the first Thursday, uh, was rained out, uh, outside, so we moved into the auditorium. And I think the 15 people that were there enjoyed these bands. So, uh, decided to give both bands another chance. Uh, so we're gonna have, uh, the Infinity Band, uh, out there and with, uh, uh, one of our own, uh, works in the, uh, planning department, Sandra Cum- Cummins. Uh, uh, plays with that, sings with that band. Uh, Patricia knows a couple of people in the band. Uh, and then we've got a, a nice 10-piece band, uh, called Classic So with a Twist. And, uh, there's a little information Nick's got up there for us. But it's tomorrow night out at Tilden Rogers Park and, uh, we've been doing it a long time. And, uh, I, I tell people, and I, I firmly believe this, I would put our fireworks up against just about anyone in the area. So, uh, if you're out and about, come out. If not, uh, probably find you a spot around town to watch some fireworks, starting about 9:15, when it's good and dark. And I do have, uh, Vector coming out. I think they already been out to take, help possibly take care of some mosquitoes too, so. Which haven't been too bad this year as far as I'm concerned.
Jim, just a quick answer. Just a quick, quick, quick question.
Yes, sir.
What would you estimate the time of the fireworks will start?
About 9:15.
9:15.
Good and dark. We, we say nine, but it, it's always a little later. And they'll last about, uh, they last 12 to 14 minutes.
Okay.
It's a nice show.
Thank you.
Same one we had last time?
Same company we had last time, which is a different guy than we've had forever.
Yeah.
But he, our new company, uh, I'm very proud. Uh, they did a good job. Uh, they do the state Capitol on Little Rock. They do a lot of shows and they are back, uh, this year to do the show.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Also, I have a big announcement that I'll be making this Wednesday coming. I think you all are gonna be very proud of, of this announcement, so I'll ask you all to look forward. It's gonna be definitely good and it's much needed for the city of West Memphis. So Wednesday, be looking out for it. I guess you probably choose tonight. That's all my announcements. Anyone else have any announcements? We have one citizen request. Ms. George Gray, uh, will you come up and we give you five minutes. Give you name and your address?
Good afternoon. Um, Mayor, you have addressed some of my problems and Councilman Mary readdressed some of them. The other problem that, well, I'm here to speak about the grass in east side of town and abandoned cars and cars that been sitting in people's neighbor, in driveways that is wrecked, not licensed. Uh, the ordinance said that if you have a car in your driveway not running, you have to have insurance and have to be tagged. That's the ordinance. Majority of the cars that you see around here in West Memphis that's sitting and not running is not licensed and are not tagged. And, uh, east side of town look horrible. Going down Walker, you have the grass on the sidewalk, coming down H, coming down Broadway from the fire department to Walker Street, you have the tall grass on the sidewalks that whoever owned the property is not cutting or they're not killing the grass. Okay? Walk this morning, some of the grass are cut. Somebody did put some weed killers on it, but the rest of them, no. So on the east side of town, we look horrible. And I wanted to address that problem, but you addressed half of it and you addressed half of it. So if our code enforcement and police is office working together, we should solve the problem.
Do you, uh, have any specific addresses or you just talking about in a whole that we can get, get taken care for you?
Uh, I have some specific addresses in Eastwood, uh, with abandoned cars sitting in the yard, red.
If you can give us that after the meeting, I'll get that taken care for you.
Okay. And the property, the grass grown up, and I'm sure you all know, it's all over these paths. Especially in the project by the Boys and Girls Club, over there in the, in the trailer park and coming down Walker Street, it's just filthy. From Walker to Polk, it's filthy.
All right. Thank you. We do, we doing, we doing everything we can at Trailer Park, so, uh, but definitely, I'm gonna get with you and get that list and everything. I get taken care, I take care for you.
All right, thanks.
All right. Hey, Stan, anything else? Need to come for a council? Well, it was a quick 40 minutes, huh? I got a motion in six to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All pay by? Oppose? All right. Y'all have a good evening.